Littleton Road. Take a look at the extent of what those traffic's like are. The problem lies with the DOT and the planning. And every time the DOT comes to the township of Precipiny and says, "Oh, we need your approval." When they were doing that mess up there on Littleton Road? And everybody gave it to them? Yeah, well, the residents of everyone on in the area that lives there. Kingston Road, Marcella Road, Richard Street, Christopher Street. You can keep naming them. Plus, his development came and went and said, "You are making a drastic mistake if you don't improve that interchange." And then UPS comes in, and now Tivia comes in with 1,600 cars it's gonna be, or more. And guess what? When they come, "Oh, there's no traffic problem up there." Let them come in. The town needs to address it by going after the DOT and going after the state of New Jersey and say, "We're not gonna let another corporation come in here with all of these tax give-outs unless the improvements are made." And yeah, the corporation should be responsible to the DOT for some of that payment, but it's not. So, I mean, we live in a nightmare. And so does, I don't know if you left. Yeah. I mean, and so does that neighborhood. And you should have to come and do it. And you can do it, you can do it in the morning, you can do it at lunchtime, you can do it at rush hour, you can do it 10 o'clock in the morning, you can do it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And you're still gonna have that Route 80 mess. And then, I mean, it is absolutely ridiculous. I lived in this, I've lived with that ever since Route 80 was developed up there. It was wrong.
One minute, Mary.
Well, I know, it's one minute. It's too bad, because they still haven't fixed my Cherry Hill Road and Grecian drain that's falling apart that I do come to the, his action center. And then, I want you to, my one minute? Go and look at Waterview Plaza. And that wall with that drainage situation where I keep asking, "Is there going to be a sidewalk?" I've come to council meetings and still haven't figured that out. Well, guess what? They can't. Because now, the way the rain is coming, it's taking the berm that's controlling, that's part of that monstrosity of a wall.
Thirty seconds.
And it goes where the sidewalk's gonna be, and it becomes a ditch. So maybe the building department and the construction department have, ought to have a better eye on what they're doing there. But please, think about the going to the DOT and changing that intersection before another 800 cars come through there for the Tivia.
Thank you.
Wasn't gonna talk about that.
Vamsi Pundla from Number 71 Summer Hill Drive, Morris Plains. It should be Parsippany, I don't know why it's Morris Plains. We live in Glenmont Commons Community. We have around 264 townhomes and several other single-family homes. And it's a nice secluded neighborhood, except that we had several water problem, water pipe issues. I think it somehow subsided right now. But the one I came here to talk about is regarding the children's park. The builder, Mr. Mossberg, had a property that was given to the township. And that time, contestant Mayor Soreno was in the community when the groundbreaking happened. And we have the picture of the groundbreaking. I did it. And what happened, I don't know, after the election? The board was removed. And there is no sign that it is a Parsippany-owned property. Just it all happened in January, as soon as Mayor, you got elected. And I think you promised that this year budget, you will be considering building the children's park, allocating some budget to give our community and our children importantly. At least, we have around 300 children in the community, like my son and his friends, a chance to enjoy the neighborhood, be a, lead an active evening time with friends and families. And we also have several seniors who are retired, and they also will get a chance to walk around, because we don't have any sidewalks in our community. So a park in, a children's park or a community park there is going to be extremely helpful for our community. I know you're doing your best this year to balance the budget, and I don't think we can enter more and reassess the budget. But please do your best for next year to consider having this park built. Appreciate your support to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you for coming down here and asking that question. Glenmont Park, when it is installed, is actually gonna be called Jimmy Vigilante Park. When it was proposed last year, it was just simply proposed. There was no money allocated for it. Okay? We have moved forward with the planning of it. We have, we've consulted members of the community. Well, I believe we took out the basketball courts and we added volleyball instead and more walking paths. I am hoping, hoping to get this for you next year. I have to see if I can have, have the money for it. I don't want to significantly raise taxes to do it, but this is important for our children. And now that we have the land, this is something I'd like to do. And thank you for coming down here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Bob Venezia, 102 Brook Lawn Drive. At the last meeting, we found out that one of Parsippany's wells is not producing and is offline, has been taken offline indefinitely. The reason given was that the well is dry. But we were also told that three new well locations are being considered to replace the lost production. My first reaction was that the situation is under control. But the more I thought about it, the more I realized the proposed fix is just temporary and does not address the underlying problem in the water system. The fact that a well ran dry means that we're using water from that well at a much greater rate than it can be replenished. But that, if that can happen to one well, why can't it happen to others? Merely digging new wells does not increase the capacity of the aquifer. It only increases the rate at which the aquifer can be tapped. In the short run, Parsippany will have more access to water. But in the long run, if our rate of usage continues to exceed the rate of replenishment, it'll be just a matter of time before the entire aquifer is at risk. There really isn't much that the administration can do to increase the supply of water. That task falls to the experts in the water department. However, there is something that you can do to make sure that there are no unnecessary increases in water consumption. You can do something about consumption. Specifically, I'm asking you to instruct the appropriate governing bodies to put a moratorium on all applications for zoning variances and zoning changes originating from high water consumption projects such as mega apartments until our short-term and our long-term water production problems are resolved. Before I leave, I'd like to hear your reaction to my suggestion and what other actions you may be considering. Thank you.
Do you want me to take a stab at that?
Sure.
The township usually stays about two wells ahead of the demand. Now, the aquifers are not the same depth. Every, every well that we have in town, we have 14 wells. Every well is not the same depth. The terrain underground is different for different portions of the aquifer. So if we dug down and had plenty of water now, okay, it might have been where the terrain was high and we run out. That's common. When we drill new wells, we're finding places where we can get into a deeper portion of the aquifer. And we've been doing that, in the 40 years I've been here, we've been doing that. And we usually stay two wells ahead of the demand. And there's no problem.
This is, this is the first time I've ever heard of a well running dry.
No, we've had them before, and we just move on to a new one. It's not a big deal.
It seems like a big deal to me. I mean, these things, these things should be, you know, when you draw it out, it's supposed to replenish. You're not supposed to be drawing it out faster, you know, than it's replenishing itself. And just digging more wells, you're sucking it out just faster and faster and faster, and you're gonna run into some, you know, some real problems in the long run, if not the short run, so.
Council President?
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just.
I happened to be at the planning board meeting last night, and I don't wanna preempt any formal announcement, but one of the things that the planning board will be considering shortly will be a new master plan. And as part of that master plan analysis, you know, they will look at things like water and sewer capacity and township utility infrastructure. And then they're gonna have to make some decisions about, you know, density and the nature of development as it relates to utility usage. So that's a, you know, that's a process that's just getting ready to kick off now.
And that's, and that's not new. We've been doing that in the past.
That's correct.
When Frank Ferrari was the mayor, our water consultants at the time, they do this echo thing to see how much water's down here and how big the caverns are for the aquifers. And at that point in time, and I'm going back to the 1980s, okay? At that point in time, the question was asked, if all of our township was developed, every, every piece of land was developed per the way it was zoned, we can't predict zoning changes, but per the way it was zoned, would we have enough water to meet the needs of Parsippany? And the answer to that was yes. And then we did that same analysis for the sewer treatment plant, which handles 15 million gallons per day. If all the property were developed, would we have sufficient capacity in the sewer treatment plant to handle all of Parsippany's demands? And the answer to that was also yes. In fact, we would have spare capacity in the sewer treatment plant.
Well, we don't have, we don't have enough water.
Time's up, though, sir.
It's up?
Yeah, if you have any other questions, you can ask after the meeting.
That was five minutes?
Yeah, you were done with your questions, and then we started going back and forth.
Kandowski, 21 Winfield Drive. I would just like to reinforce and build on what Bob had talked about. I, you know, things change over time. And what maybe was the recharge capacity or recharge rate in the 1980s could be totally different now. We've had periods now of drought. I've heard it said that, you know, New Jersey is three, three years of drought away from a, you know, a total disaster. Obviously, the demands for water have, have increased everywhere in the state, everywhere in this country. And I would like to see some analysis that backs up some of the assertions that we're hearing. So in other words, I'd like to see an analysis that says, "Here's how big the Buried Valley Aquifer is," or at least the parts that we draw upon. "Here's what we think the reserves are. Here's what the recharge rate is. Here's what could happen if you had normal weather, or dry weather, or very dry weather, et cetera." So that we have facts instead of everybody thinking, "Well, this could sound bad, but it might not be as bad as we think, and we've had it before." I mean, let's get facts and data so we all understand what's going on, and we can all see if there's a problem, or we could all feel very comfortable that we don't have a problem. So please let us know. Thank you.
You're right. That's, that's why I said the data that I looked at was in the 1980s. It's appropriate to look at it again.
Right. And that'll be part of the master plan process.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. I just happen to have some information I collected from my friend Dave Pfeiffer at the Anjack. And I'm just gonna read. "Precipiny Troy Hills is the Buried Valley Aquifer with heavy drawdown during summer months and limited recharge of the aquifer. If you will notice, there are contracts to purchase water from JCMUA, which was initiated 2006, Morris County Municipal, East Morris, 1977, and Morris County Municipal, another one in 1995. Without these contracts in place, Precipiny Troy Hills would have a shortfall in their water." Mr. DiPiero always says Precipiny was forced, forced to have these other water contracts. They weren't forced. They were made to under the Drinking Water, Drinking Water Acts and Rules, New Jersey AC 710. They, they had to. I'm gonna read some other interesting things, and I'm gonna leave this paper with Bob. According to the Highlands data, most of Precipiny Troy is in a water deficit area. The deficit is somewhere between 1 and 7.11 million gallons per day. This is the most stressed category of water deficit in the Highlands. Part of the problem here is that the groundwater is withdrawn and then conveyed to the downstream sewer treatment plant, where it flows down the Rockaway and is no longer available to recharge the aquifer. This is called water mining. And then utility capacity. According to the Highlands Council Technical Report on Utility Capacity, Precipiny Troy Hills Water System has an available supply of 343.86 million gallons per month, 11.46 million gallons a day. Its demand in 2004 was 296.477 million gallons a month, or 988 million gallons a day. And its available capacity is 447.83, excuse me, million gallons a month, or 1.8 million gallons a day. This translates roughly to a residential population of about 15,000. None of this supplies if the overall aquifer is being depleted by pumping at a rate greater than recharge. Depletion by recharge by developing impervious surface, soil compaction, and forest removal, which we've had quite a bit of lately. And then, just lastly, you will know Precipiny Troy has wellhead contributing areas are overlapping. There would be interference between wells. The underground aquifer is connected. They're not sure how, but it is connected. It is possible that if one or more were pumped harder, which is a well, it could dry up and adjoining wells in the overlapping wellhead area as well. So it's a lot more complicated, and you can't take the water for granted. I'm gonna give this paper to Bob. I have a lot more information, but I don't have the time.
And. Thirty seconds.
Like I, so, we don't have a lot of water, and we are having problems, and all this development around here is definitely affecting Precipiny.
Good evening. Eric Densmore, 95 Mara Road. I have an issue that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. I live over in the Knoll Gardens apartment complex, right off of Beverwick Road. And two issues kind of have been occurring that are plaguing the complex. One is, it has become a dumping ground by both residents and non-residents for basically abandoned cars. I'm talking vehicles that aren't used. They're, I've seen inspection stickers from six, seven years ago. These cars are not insured. And they're just basically occupying all of the parking spaces. I've brought this to the attention of the complex management on several occasions. It kind of falls on deaf ears. Does the municipal government have any authority on this? Because I guarantee you, a lot of these vehicles are insured, and they're being left there not just by residents, but by people who don't live in the complex either.
Is that your only?
The other question I have is just, it's more of a public safety issue. I live right on Mara Road, where Knoll Road goes all the way down to where Beverwick begins. People are cutting through, non-residents are cutting through Mara Road and speeding right through the complex at very high velocities. And it's become very dangerous. You have kids walking there, school buses let their kids out all the time. Does the town have any way to stop that from happening? That's all.
Sir, what I would recommend to you, I would contact the police department, and I would report the locate, do these cars have license plates on them?
Some of them don't.
Okay, some do and some don't. I would, I would call the police department. I would report those vehicles. I would report, give a description of the vehicle as best you can. If it has a license plate on it, give it.
A lot of these vehicles have tires on them.
Okay, well, you could still, you can still give a location and give as much information as, you know, it's been, you've noticed it there for X amount of time, it hasn't moved, whatever. And then the police department can also look into those vehicles as well.
Papatata, 182 Walkins Avenue. That's the one I mentioned, I was at a Board of Adjustment meeting last week. And one of the applications was a variance in a zone of R4, a devariance, to legalize a second structure on a lot that's for residential use. This is property in Lake Hiawatha. It's 40 by 100. When I was listening, I was figuring out, you know, how, how can they have two pieces, two houses on this little piece of property? And they were talking about driveways and all this kind of stuff. It's a rental home. I have the address, I have everything on it if you're interested. I have a couple of questions. Who makes up the rules for the Board of Adjustment? What do they have to follow? And what real authority do they have? And if there's a way of changing the Board of Adjustment, is it possible that we can get them to go out and look at properties that are coming before them? I went over and I checked out this house today. It's a, I could show you pictures of it. It's a little house, right up alongside the other little house, and right up against the property line here is a driveway. Your house is here. It's little, what they call a house is back here. With a driveway that goes back there, and then a smaller driveway that's here. Okay? They came to the Board of Adjustment to get this legalized. What they did was they had an attorney with them, who brought in all these deeds and, what do you call those things? That showed that this, this thing was, you know, on the property back when. And they're trying to say, "Back in the 1800s," and all this stuff, right? And then they said, "Well, one of the papers, it said, 'house slash garage,' or garage slash house." So they had a choice. Alls I know is this property has been rented since these people own it. They don't even live there. They rent both properties, both houses out. If you look at it, you can tell it was meant to be a garage. But my biggest problem with this is the, what he was told to do, the resident. They legalized it. No problem there. He's had it for so many years, so why not legalize it? I say, because he's been doing wrong. Does the town get anything for rentals? I don't know. But what I do know is that Mr. Ira Kane asked a man about his water in his sewer, which he doesn't pay a separate thing for, till hooked up to one. He told that individual, to make sure, he's at town hall tomorrow morning, and let you guys know that he needs to be hooked up to the sewer with that other piece of property I don't understand. As a resident, I'm sitting here going, "They should have held that off, number one, until they made sure the property was really, you know, what it's supposed to be." I mean, nobody looks at anything. The fact that the man is not hooked up to the sewer, but he's, you know, he pays all the bills for the sewer and the water and the electric.
One minute.
So I don't know where the electric's coming from, you know, the water, the sewer. He's been renting his house, he mentioned the other night, since 1989. I think he owes us a damn lot of money. But I do not see how a Board of Adjustment can do that and allow somebody to do something and legalize something that really probably wasn't legal to begin with, but hey, they did it, you know, can't say nothing about it. But the fact of the matter is, isn't it their responsibility to come to the town and let the town know that, "Hey, I just did this last night, I legalized this, and I expect you or this person to go and check this place out."
Thirty seconds.
You know, and make sure we're hooked up and everything's being done. We're not doing that. And that, again, is costing the township money. Because you don't know how big that place is, you don't know how many people are inside that place. The neighbors were there complaining about cars and stuff. You know, that, that was to be, that was just to be told, you know, "Go, go call a cop."
Okay, time's up. Pat, sorry.
Direct me. Thank you.
So just generally, the Board of Adjustment has statutory authority under municipal land use law to hear and decide use variances, and also to grant certifications for property that may predate zoning. I wasn't at the hearing, I don't know what proofs were offered, but that is their authority under law to go ahead and make that determination that the use may have predated zoning, or that they were entitled to a use variance. You know, the Board, the Board is quasi-independent. Its members are appointed by mayor and council.
Appointed by the council?
Appointed by council, correct. That's correct.
No.
I think.
The Board of Adjustment is appointed by the council.
By council.
The planning board is appointed by the mayor.
Correct.
With the exception of the council member on the planning board.
That's correct. Right. Right. So.
See no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Got a little tired there. So.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, so a motion to close the public hearing. Who made the motion?
I did.
You did? And, okay, so a motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. We have a roll call. Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, this is a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes.
I understand. Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
The floor is closed. We will not be having another public hearing tonight.
The ordinance is Ms. McCarthy?
Be it resolved, all items listed with the asterisks are routine? No, 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 no?
Page four.
Oh, page four? I'm trying to remember.
2018, call 13.
Trying to rush this thing. Where are we?
2018, number 13.
Page four. Okay. Ordinance 2018.
Don't worry, Janice, I understand your pain.
Call 13. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, granting a utility easement to Morris Corporate Center over a portion of Block 136, Lot 44, on the tax map of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills on July 24, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and. and final passage at a meeting to be held August 21, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2018, colon 14, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of Precipity Troy Hills, to prohibit parking along a section of Weebro Road. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on July 24, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 21, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, this is ordinance for a no parking sign on Weebro Road.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2018, colon 09, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 326 Sewerage Disposal Systems Individual of the Code of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, related to applications for an initial license to operate a subsurface sewage disposal system. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on June 22, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the June 19, 2018 regular meeting. Motion to accept that ordinance 2018, colon 09, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2018, colon 09.
Motion for a public hearing made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. How many septic, how many people in Precipity aren't hooked up to the sewer system that this ordinance is necessary, and how will it be enforced?
I think that's an answer we're gonna have to get for you.
Yeah.
We'll have to defer that for later. Nick, we'll have to get that information for you, okay?
I don't know the status of a number of people who are currently on septic. It'll be enforced through a licensing scheme. This is a requirement of both state law, and I think the county board of health as I don't, as I said, I don't know the number of people who will be affected by it.
Well, we have certain areas that are affected. Putting Stone, for instance, they, they're, all of those homes are on one acre and two acre tracts of land, and they each have their own septic system and water. But now that we've opened the Greystone Sewer Treatment Plant, it's possible now, because they were too far away for us to connect.
To connect in.
All the way to the other end of town. But now with Greystone there, it's possible we can, we can provide sewage for them at some point in the near future.
Okay. Close it.
We need a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
In a second. Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ordinance 2018, colon 12, being polled?
Being polled, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have to table that.
Okay, can non-consent agenda, non-consent agenda, Ms. Peterson?
Be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are routine and non-controversial by the Township Council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
No on number four and number seven, yes on all the rest.
Okay, so no on number four and number seven. Okay, Ms. Grignani?
Yes, what, in regards to number four?
Uh huh.
What are the, what is the financial consulting services, the Cannon Group, what are they going to be doing for the township?
Uh, Ms. Kooch, I'll take that.
I don't think they work that at all.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Kooch.
Thank you. The Cannon, we took proposals for the study for the sewer pricing formula for the outside towns. There are the four towns that we service, and they've requested that, an audit, so to speak, of what we charge them in costs. So we thought it best, as the four, as the five towns, to get an independent group to come in and analyze the costs, and come up with the new percentages, since the percentages are 40 years old. So that's kind of an agreement that's been going on for about two years to get to this point. The Cannon Group was lower than the other group that came in, so we're looking forward to, going forward to get the right pricing for the four towns.
So it's a cost study?
Yes, it's a cost study. It's strictly... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ann, I didn't, I didn't hear you, the last sentence.
Yeah, it's strictly a cost study that we requested, I mean, my group at least. The finance department is asking for an independent cost study to be done...
Okay.
For the allocation of the cost to the four towns that we serve in the sewer system. So this is all part of the sewer analysis.
This will be, this will be charged to the sewer?
Completely, yes.
Okay, didn't we, didn't we have a settlement with several of the towns already in regard to the, to the cost?
Yes, we did.
That we were charging them?
Yes, but this is to go forward. We've tried to...
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. Yes, we did try and...
And Collette, number seven, can someone give me an idea as to what we're doing for professional services to CGP and HLLC, number seven?
That's an affordable housing.
What are they going to be doing for the township?
That's an affordable housing consulting company. We already have Ed Snikus, who's been our affordable housing expert for the last 20 years. Why we need to go to another strange consulting company, I don't know, but Ed Snikus is the expert on this.
Okay, so are we saying with this, number seven, ordinance resolution, R2018-130, that Mr. Snikus is not going to be assisting the township anymore with the cohort, and this is going to be another group that's coming in?
No, that's not correct. Mr. Snikus is still the township planner with respect to affordable housing matters. He and I attended recently a meeting, along with Administrator Sandman, where we heard a presentation from the firm CGPH with respect to what's called a market to affordable housing program, that would allow the township the opportunity to potentially capture some additional credits for existing rental housing that currently exists in the township. And the proposal is to address that potential initiative as part of our affordable housing strategy.
Ed Snikus doesn't know about this?
No, he was, he was at the meeting.
And he agreed that we should have another company involved?
Only with respect to the formulation of a market to affordable program. Some of this is subject to attorney-client privilege, because we're currently in litigation with others concerning our affordable housing strategy.
Yes, I know.
So I would prefer not to discuss all of this in public.
Okay. All right, I will change my two no votes to yes.
Okay. Okay, so for the record, Councilmember DePiero had voted no on resolution number four and number seven. However, he has changed his vote after the explanation by the attorney to yes votes. Ms. Grignani?
No, I have, I've gotten the information that I've requested, and I'll go along with the resolution.
Okay, so, yes for Ms. Grignani, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy?
Can't we stay longer?
Seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, this is to end the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Hallelujah. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Collette, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I didn't, oh, you will be there, yes, that's right. I will see you, well, I don't know if you can have one. Yeah, yeah. I really, I think the environmental groups want to meet. Yes, I will be seeing your big... I know that.
It's about 2017.
You'll let me know. You can have that.
The correct...
We know.